Good afternoon, everyone. It's 3:00 PM right on time and we have a quorum. I want to thank everybody for coming out today for our monthly board meeting. And with that, I would like to call the board and roll call.
Chairman Henry?
Here.
Vice Chair Parks. Commissioner Obuchowski. Commissioner McFarland.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Turnbull? Commissioner Salem?
Here.
Okay. We need a motion for approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Same.
And probably move the second. Roll call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Okay. Public comments on Agenda Item 01. Public comments on Agenda Item 01. Hearing none, I would like to entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
And probably move the second. Roll call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Okay, moving right along. We're down to new business and we have a resolution to discuss and get some action on. Resolution 2024-3, HJIP grant.
Sure, so it's for the HJIP grant. We're just working through closing out the due diligence checklist and this resolution is just part of that. Really just saying that the board is aware of the HJIP grant and that we're taking it on through these, with these properties as well.
Okay, roll call.
The rest of the words probably went through, what was it?
Property, there is three in Havana and one in Champagne.
I read you the resolution and I think it's a good thing I didn't have any questions. So if anyone else has any question, I would like to entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Same.
And probably move the second. Roll call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Okay, motion that is approved. The next is approval of the procurement in Section 3.2.
Hello.
Hi.
So we're requesting to do an update to the procurement policy. They just HUD has updated the code of federal regulations of where we can find more guidance for the procurement policy. So we want to update that. And then the Section 3 policy was just a little outdated. So we started to draft a while ago and then we kind of did some edits and we just want to get that approved.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board members about that? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for a second for approval of the procurement in Section 3 plan.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Okay, next item we have is the intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between Housing Authority of Champagne County and the Housing Authority of Juliet, Illinois, in discussion.
So this intergovernmental agreement is specifically focused around training some of our finance staff. And Housing Authority of Juliet has been one of the premier agencies around financial management. And so specifically around that, but also could potentially include some other services. But we're just hoping to work with Juliet just for some training purposes. And the intergovernmental agreement with another housing authority is, we feel, the best way to do as opposed to bringing in outside consultants.
What type of, how much interaction will it be? I mean, is it how it's set up?
So we're not, it's not intended to be intensive, just kind of like some training, another colleague to maybe potentially ask questions to as it relates like development finance, some BMS stuff, things like that.
Oh, that sounds good.
But it won't be anything intensive, like they're not going to be here like taking over our finance department or anything like that. It's just for some training.
Okay, that sounds good. Roll call, please.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Do you need a motion for that?
Oh, I'm happy. I'm going too far with myself.
So moved.
Everything is pretty much automatically with, thank you.
Chairman Henry?
Frankie Burke.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan? Commissioner McFarland?
Yes.
Okay, we're on the way down to our executive officers report.
All right.
Time for our activities.
So first off, we'd like to congratulate our June Employee of the Month, Ms. Leah Wick. So we are the education coordinator. So Leah was nominated, rightfully so. She does a great job at being a right hand for Siobhan. So Leah, if you would like to come up and say a few words, or no, I'm sorry, I did that backwards. Siobhan.
For you to speak.
Okay, so due to everything that Lily said, since Leah's come to my program, she's been instrumental in helping me with the, you know, day-to-day tasks of the program. And so some of the weight that I've been carrying with having to deal with other things, she stepped in and helped to do some, to take off some of that and work with the staff. And so she is also now been promoted to Youth Build Program Manager. So that's a recent title for her. So Leah, I'm glad to have you. You're my right hand and I couldn't do without you, so I appreciate you.
Now Leah, what do you want to say?
So, I'm Leah, but I'm sensitive. We're cancers and they noticed and they didn't warn me. Well, thank you. See, I can't.
We should all.
Congratulations in front of.
I was just emotional. Okay, okay, okay. So I love kids, number one. They're my heart and so that's why I'm here. A part of HCC's mission is a huge reason why I'm here as well because making a difference in the community is something that's near and dear to my heart. And so I appreciate being recognized because I really work very hard. It's something that I struggled with my whole life because I like cannot stop myself from working so hard. And so then I end up sick or tired or this and that. And so that's why I came on too. But the kids, y'all, like, I know a lot of times y'all hear about Youth Build and you say like, oh man, here they go. They need this, they need that. Like Youth Build is making a huge difference with our community. Like, y'all will never know what it means to some of these kids. And so multiple times, the staff prior to me getting here, it was different. So there was a change in culture when I got here. And I'm like super professional, so it was different for me to come work amongst people that weren't quite there. But when I tell you Lily and Siobhan was like, Leah, we're with you, we hear you, we see you, and that's where we wanted to be. So there was a point where I thought I wouldn't be here, like it was just too much. But they saw something in me that obviously I didn't know I had at the moment to contribute to this place. And not only that, like these women, as easy as they make it look, like I got to see into the world of housing as it looks, not as an outsider, but someone who has never even utilized the housing authorities programs, assistance, anything. So thank you for what you do, Lily.
Thank you, thank you for what you do.
And thank you, Siobhan, for believing in me and trusting me. But please do not give up on Youth Build. We are bringing it back up, we're getting it together, and this is not the end of us. Like it's only up from here, so thank you guys.
Thank you very much for those kind words. We're proud of our Youth Build programs and adding a lot to it and will continue to prosper with the program and the leadership we have.
All right, thank you. And then the next, we have two employee nominations for Cruising and Crushing it, which is, as you all kind of remember, our employee incentive program. So we can't make everybody Employee of the Month every month, but we are trying to do more, do a better job at recognizing people. And so this specific award is, we're trying to do it quarterly and it's Cruising and Crushing for individuals who have demonstrated consistent performance. And so this quarter, Curtis Lux, who is our maintenance, one of our maintenance techs, and Kamika Calhoun, who is an HCV specialist, were nominated. And so they received a $50 gas card for the Cruising and a Crush pot for the Crushing. So congratulations to them. They're not here, but just wanted to let you all know that they were selected. We're also very excited to have a Youth Enrichment Foundation Scholarship recipient, Kimberly Hamilton. So just wanted to share that with the board. It was an enrichment scholarship for the Havana Park District Summer Sport Program. So just to continue to show the board and demonstrate that what we're doing with enrichment dollars, whether it's we're receiving it through donations or fundraising or anything like that. Another very exciting story, LaShonda Johnson, who is the owner of Mama Duke's Food Truck. She was nominated for the Top Five Favorite Black-Owned Businesses in the CU area. And she was, she's an HACC participant, but she's also one of the recipients of our Small Business Opportunity Program. So she received that micro grant to get her business started. And so it was really cool to see that she's one of the top five favorite black-owned businesses. So it's one of the really cool things about our services that, outside of housing, that it shows that it's working and it's doing well. All right, other activities and updates. Youth Build has officially moved to Pioneer, so they are gone from this place. This week was their first week. And so we'll miss them, but they're in their own space now. And so really getting all the staff finally have offices. They're not in one, in a one-room schoolhouse, as Siobhan likes to say, but they have their spaces. So we are really happy to have that space for them and we will welcome the board to come take a tour of it whenever you all like. It has an area in the back that will be for construction training and then the classroom space up front. And so it's a nice space for them. A little tight already because the program has grown so much from when we first purchased that space. But we know, we know it's tight and so we'll utilize that space for everything that we can, so. Also wanted to update the board on some new faces that we have at the Housing Authorities. So we wanted to welcome Jayla Carter, Carlos and Jayla. And well, Jayla started a few months ago, but we had a staff update. So Jayla and Carlos are HCV clerks and we have a new HCV intake coordinator, Charles Jackson. Our new project and construction manager, Justin Reynolds, who is here, so Justin ain't going away. Youth Build Case Manager Marcel McNutt. Hannah Shanks is our career specialist for Youth Build. And we have a new education instructor, Tavoris Collins, for Youth Build. So lots of new faces and we're happy to have them on the team. All right.
Graduation?
Yes, details about that are in the further slides. And so HACC's NTW intern Angela is here. She's going to share with us a little bit about her experience. Today is her last day before she moves to New Zealand and it was great to have her. So I'm going to come up Angela and share a little bit about your experience, interning.
Sure, thanks Katie. Hi, I'm Angela. Yeah, today's my last day in Joliet, Texas. I've had such a blast here at HACC, obviously, the past six weeks. So well, I'm by, I kind of dabbled in like everywhere. I think I, I think I helped everybody maybe at least once or at least learned something from everybody. But mostly I worked with Katie and Kenyatta. I was with them at Oakwood Trace a lot. I would sit in on meetings and, you know, go to like Salt and Life or First Followers and sit in on their meetings. And so I learned a lot about, you know, what we do here at HACC in terms of outreach, but also, you know, keeping our residents compliant. Then also kind of seeing, you know, what we do here at HACC in terms of the voucher, the process of what it's like to get a voucher, you know, from making the wrap the package or the folder to sitting in on a briefing. So I really did learn a lot given our short time here and I'm really grateful for everybody. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
There are two national associations, FADA and Arrow. They've been pushing for the last several years, internships for, just to keep young college graduates and students that are graduating from college, to get them exposure in the field of housing. Because, you know, housing is an emerging, it's emerging in a sense of dealing with the home business and all the other issues. So going back two years ago at the Illinois Housing Council in Chicago, they have a program where they try and select students from various colleges and to give them training in this growing field. And so thanks to our leader here, executive director Ms. Martin, she's seen, she's seen the growth in, across the country really, with housing agencies and trying to get young people involved. I know at FADA, they have, they give a scholarship out and the person that received the scholarship in New Orleans is a student coming out of one of the high schools in Michigan, at State of Michigan. And she's got a full ride to the University of Michigan to further her growth and development and education in this field. And housing is never going to go away. I mean, you know, it's been here around since the 1930s and it's continuing to grow, continuing to deal with more, more homelessness, more problems, et cetera. So the more young people that we can get exposure to in this program is going to help both organizations and the housing industry per se. So thanks to you for having the vision to keep people coming through this. So I just wanted to make that. And we want to thank Angela for her expertise and giving us the board a little feedback too about your experience here. So thanks a lot.
Thank you. It's definitely been a pleasure to have you here, Angela. And we always welcome internship opportunities. It's a good way for us to share our knowledge with the young and up-and-coming professionals as well as we learn a lot from them. So thank you. All right, next, I have to embarrass Jennifer. Jennifer, so as of today, actually, she received notice that she is now a housing credit, housing credit certified professional. So it means that she is complying and she's, she's working with all the regulations and policies around the tax credit program. And so we are excited to have Jennifer be certified in that. She's worked hard to get that certification and she has really demonstrated a lot of growth in her last year here. And it's sufficient a year, so. So congratulations to you, Jennifer. I was also appointed to the board for Hope Fair Housing, so I'm really excited about that. Been working with Hope for a while. They've been, probably the last two years or so, I've been working with Hope Fair Housing on different things, different cases related to our clients. And so we've hosted a lot of workshops with them and so they recently asked me to join their board. So I'm excited about that opportunity to work with them and I look forward to the partnership.
Can I read the quote?
Sure, darling.
So this is why they nominated her. Your dedication to serving those in need of affordable housing, partnership with Hope and the unique skills and perspectives you have are exactly what we need to drive our organization's visions forward. Your experience as a PHA executive will positively impact our ability to grow stronger and more effective. And I just think that has to be read aloud.
All right, so next, I want Jolina to talk about a really great partnership that she actually started for us and spearheaded. So do you like to share?
Yes, so over the past few months, which this ended in about April, and it started, I think, December. It was, yeah, I partnered with a group of students at the College of Business at U of I and we kind of just dived very deep into our partnership with landlords. And they kind of did a free consulting project on how to better improve our service of utilization and strengthening our landlord's connections. So they gave us a very comprehensive presentation to Ms. Tiffany, Jennifer and myself. And it was really awesome. They gave us a lot of insightful recommendations on how to implement better processes, whether it be kind of cutting back on our paper usage, how to kind of get the word out with like PR. And I think it was a really cool step in strengthening our connection with the University of Illinois. And so, yeah, I just want to thank them because they worked really hard. I met with them every Friday for like 45 minutes on Zoom and it was, it was, it was really cool because they didn't know anything about the housing authority. They didn't know anything about vouchers. They didn't know anything. Sorry, I feel like I'm calling them stupid. But yeah, so it was a learning process for them and it also better helped me understand the housing authority as well since I kind of started it only a few months into working here. So it was really cool for both parties.
It was a really, a really, a really nice opportunity to work with the university. And I remember during our strategic planning a couple of years back, Todd, I think you had recommended that we work with the College of Business. And so this was one step that we took to participate in that, so good opportunity. We, Dr. Henry, fresh guy, new board member, and myself, Jennifer and Miguel and Jolina, we attended the FADA New Orleans Conference, so a really great conference, learned a lot. So that was cool to participate in, just wanted to share that with the board. And then we hosted our Quarter Two All Staff Meetup, where we just kind of announced the quarterly awards and just celebrated with the staff. We have Portillo's and everybody like that. So it was a nice, a nice little meeting just to get the staff to continue to find ways to connect and engage with them. And then we've got a really cool announcement. We partnered on, we partnered with BOLO on an internet grant. And so they, we have won that grant. It's $195,000 and that is going to go to upgrade Wi-Fi access points at our properties. And so we're really, really excited to be able to get some better quality internet and get internet in places where we didn't currently have it. So very excited to do that. And so Stephanie had worked really hard on that, so we're excited that we've got that opportunity, so.
Just make one brief comment. Having that engagement with the University of Illinois East School of Business is really very significant. I think it's just really great. I mean, that's one of the top schools in the country. And to have some exposure to that and have some of our students as well, it's just the effects that it brings in sending us out to the Housing Authority of Champagne County and it's just a win-win situation. East is really huge. It's a well-renowned school. And to have, have HACC attached and give and take is really tremendous, so that's great.
Yeah, there were some really, really, really sharp young people. I don't remember being that engaged when I was in college. They were so sharp. I mean, they were very impressive and so I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to work with them again in the next semester, so.
I think we are. I think they're going to set their focus on Youth Build this year.
Oh, good.
Keep it, keep it going.
And it's a good way to get the housing authority out there as well, so they understand what we do. All right, and then the week of May 20th through 24th, the reason why we canceled that board meeting is because we had onsite compliance and monitoring review from HUD. So Dr. Henry did come on the last day. Dr. Henry and Linda, they asked to speak with both of them and so we got to participate in that. It was the first time, probably, I think the last time I remember HUD being here was maybe the first year I came here, so 2018, 19. So they hadn't been out in a while, so it was, it went pretty well. They gave us some preliminary findings and nothing was groundbreaking. We haven't gotten the final list of findings, but nothing was too terrible. So once we do get that, they'll share it with the entire board. And if you all have any questions, then we'd be happy to answer them.
Just a scheduled visit?
Yes, scheduled visit, yes. All right, then we got some youth build updates, Siobhan.
So on the day when we recognize one of our staffers, also I want to bring attention to our Student of the Month. So this is Deshaun Walsh Jr., who we call DJ. And so he was chosen this month because he consistently displays a helpful and positive energy to the staff as well as cohort members. You can always count on him to offer a Good Morning hug if you're the first volunteer to take out the trash at the end of the day. Okay, so Youth Build members earned their Fort Look certifications as well as completed the basic safety module of the NTCER construction component and that stands for the National Center for Construction Education and Research. We also did a college visit day to Eastern Illinois University, but this is kind of, it's kind of become an annual one that we would go and visit. So there you can see the students are participating in the bottom one and some informational, so that was nice. And then we also did a hands-on partnership for hands-on construction work with First Followers. And then a June 2 celebration took out with HACC staff and students and one of our students was a Girl Master.
And the food was very good. I got to throw that out there. He said he wanted to, he wanted to go to school for culinary arts. Yeah, I was like, well, you're going to be a great chef. I think I had two plates.
And recently I was chosen by Youth Build USA to join their 2024 fellowship. So I was recently in awesome for a birthday.
So yeah, very, very proud of Siobhan for being selected to be, to participate in the fellowship. It really shows that she has demonstrated a lot of leadership nationally and statewide with the Youth Build program. So we're lucky to have you and very proud of you.
Thank you. Okay, here you go, Dr. Henry. Graduation is August 24th at noon at the Orbiom Theater.
Oh, wow.
And then we also received our third round of Department of Labor Youth Build grant funding of $1.5 million, so.
So Youth Build was renewed for another, another 40 months, so. Excited to have that. And then some financial updates from Miguel and then.
Before I start, I, I know that, that there's been some type of interest in getting more, the financial information in a way that's more, more friendlier other than just numbers. So I just want to ask a little bit of questions because we'll get there. As you know, recently, we've acquired several properties, houses and buildings and, you know, when you get a group of checks from, we have to go through money orders from. from Robert, we have to go through money orders from central. And you don't have where to apply them because nothing's been set up in the system. So my point is that we, all this activity that's been going needs support. Unfortunately, sometimes the urgent takes the time of the important. So we'll get there. So I just wanted to mention that. I'm also excited about the idea of this consulting, if I need to call it this way, Joliet Housing Authority. Basically, I felt in many occasions like, I don't know if you recall, I took this position back in 2020. My former boss had been here for 11 years. And before he left, I said, who do I ask questions? His only advice was to auditors. Who knows how do I reflect this? The first time the auditor called me and I took his phone call, he said, oh, you're still there? And actually, he wasn't being sarcastic or anything. It was just, you know, that he wasn't sure that I would still answer the phone. And I hoped that things would have remained, the operation would have remained as it was then with the RAS, Mahomet, you know. But this grew, this grew very much. Youth Build started a committee in 2021, very humble, with one grant from the Department of Labor. Now we have four more grants. So it's become a world of its own. I thought it was important to mention that because that has to do also with financially reporting. I made a change on the way that I present in the figures and I really didn't know if the real versus budget would be on the screen. But you may recall that I normally have like a consolidated real versus budget of all of our funds and all of our property management and all of our grants. I realized in the last two months that I was putting together the port meeting reports, the grants, how they merged into all this activity, especially on the budget side because it's somewhat, it could be somewhat misleading. Not the actual figures, because the actual figures are actually a reflection of the accounting, but when you come to the budget part. Just to give an example, when I was doing the budget for 2024 back in September, October of 2023, I knew about Illinois Youth Pool Coalition grant that was gonna end in August. So when I did the budget, I allocated the remaining amount of the grant to August. But then in the middle of the year, there was another grant coming out. So to predict that would have been somewhat difficult because, I mean, there was no assurance that the grant was gonna be renewed. So all those effects kind of contaminated the financial statements, especially when you compare real versus budget. Then your budget column is limping and you look like you may be over budgeted when you really aren't. It's just a matter of presentation. So being that said, I'm gonna make a change going forward with everything that's related to grants. And 90% of the grants is really Youth Build, although we have now this H, the one with the big acronyms, H A P grant. And all of those are actually significantly important. So what I've done is I kind of took them out. Actually, the real versus budget, it's probably on the material that was given. But I just want to mention that on the income side, we are 9.5% under budget. But something, something happened in June, because we're looking at May right now, that actually, I took it very positively, halted the hyperconsolidation of 2023 and we were actually given an additional 1.3 million. So that helps on cash flow because if you think of all the activity we're doing, all the purchases of properties that we're doing, a lot of that is pay first, will refund it later. So you need to have some sort of, you know, cushion there or something that you can, that you control. All of the Youth Build grants are the same way. Pay first, report, will refund it later. So that definitely is gonna help. That's actually gonna put our revenue over budget on the next month. As far as the expenses, first, 5.6% over budget for $171,000, which is actually pretty, pretty good as far as keeping in track with what we're doing. Regarding the purchases that we've done, and normally I took this in the opposite order, but I just want to mention that before I finish. Since we did not have a board meeting in May, I'm working with the, I'm working with the figures for April and May. We did a disbursement to consolidate communications of $26,000. And actually, part of that was our, a new telephone system for $23,600. We do have insurance because there was a flood there that was actually what made us have to replace it. But those insurance policies for property have $10,000 deductible. So we just got like $13,600. But anyway, at least we, we had insurance. We were covered with insurance. And in the month of May, we had some property taxes that were paid for the Coler's houses that belonged to 2023. I know we've turned them back to carlo, but 2023, we still had. Some training for Youth Build, then Foster, $10,150 square area construction, $25,000. And we paid Champaign County Collector $10,900 for property taxes of 209 Central that belonged to 2023. So that's pretty much what I had to report.
Thank you, Joe.
You know, I want to make a comment because I know that I'm one of the people that raised consolidating the report. First, I got a sense that maybe you're taking it too personally that we've asked for a consolidated report. None of us are our parents, okay? And sometimes we get a report that's 75 pages or 100 pages and that's way beyond when any of us have the ability. You are the expert on that and we appreciate your expertise in this. I think as a board, what we want to know primarily is where, we wrote a budget for this year. Why are we ahead? Why are we behind? And what are we doing to resolve the problem? Just to make it as simple as possible, as possible. When I see 20 pages of lists, and maybe we're obligated, and Eric will probably know more than this because he knows our obligation. Maybe we're obligated to list, for example, every check we write as an organization, but they're meaningless to me. When I, when I see 20 pages of checks being written to different agencies, which I'm sure are all legitimate checks, they don't mean, they don't mean anything because I don't know who to assign them to. And again, it's not my expertise. That's what you and yourself do. They, you're experts on that. We just want to see the end result of having written those checks and spending this shit. Does that make sense? So on other boards that I'm on, normally I would get a four, five, six page summary that depending on the number of property groups and the number of projects that we have, that is an executive overview for us to look at and see where we stand. So I just wanted to say that. Don't, don't, I don't want to make it seem like in any way we have any questions, doubts or concerns about the work that you're doing. I just would like to see it in a format that I understand because I'm not as smart as you when it comes to this stuff and that's the truth.
Yeah, we definitely understand that. And internally, we've been working to do monthly meetings with programs so that everybody is on the same page. So each program is meeting with the finance department to explain why they might be over budgeted on certain areas so we can be able to present that to the board in a more consolidated fashion. And also that's why we have entered into the IGA with the Housing Authority of Joliet, an agency that has similar operations to us because we're so complex. We've got development finance, we've got properties, we've got grants, we've got H E. So it's just, it's very complex operation. So it's difficult to simplify it into like one balance sheet. And so we're working with the agency that has a little more experience in doing so than we do. Hopefully in the coming months, we'll be able to clean up the finances and be able to present, present the finances. I feel like we're being transparent with the finances, but maybe too transparent and not clear enough, so.
And I think that's what I said. I think that's exactly, I think we're, I think we're over distributing information that is not relevant to our, to what we need to make. We're here to help make decisions and help provide guidance. Not we assume, maybe incorrectly or correctly, that, you know, June, on a daily basis and you run the department exceptionally well. We assume that. We just want to be able to glance at it and know this is a skill we're sufficiently for where we're headed.
Absolutely.
I'd just like to say pretty much the same thing. Don't want to be redundant, but outside of the annual audit that we get from our auditors, at least in Connecticut? Do you ever, I mean, that's just an annual thing, right? And usually, we come out of that with in good shape. I mean, I have very few, I've, since I've been sitting on a board after a long, long time, have we had any major issues at all? So as long as Miguel and you and the other people in the finance department are on top of things, that's what we need. And also, do you ever consult? I mean, if there is an issue, have you ever talked with your HR person or any person, do you ever get involved or yes? Have somebody else look at something? And I think it's good I do have this agreement with Joliet too. So because this is a major, major part of our operation is the finances. And if HUD's ever gonna come after you for anything, it's because of finances. That's one of the major things. And I've had a few conversations with Miguel as well. So I'm reinforcing what you are doing, what you're doing. And if you, if you need help, if you need some further clarification to make things understandable for our board members, I think that's, that's helpful too. And I really think it's good with Joliet. Attorney, you're Joliet's.
I am.
So that's another good, healthy situation for all of us. And we never, we've never had any major issues whatsoever. And we don't want any major problems with any of our operations when it comes to finances. So I think we're leaning in the right direction.
I have one other thing that I failed to put on the report, but Miguel's report made me remember. But we have completed the transaction for the purchase of Douglas Square so the Housing Authority now owns that. The tax credit is working on that project. And so we're happy that that's completed. So Eric helped us with that, so thank you. We haven't gotten to there yet. We're working towards that. All right, and that's it. Need approval of financial posts.
I guess we need approval of the financial report. March detailed check listing and cash disbursements for May 2024. So move. And properly move the second rule call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any public comments? None in the eye of the eye. Hearing none? Is there a need for a closed session?
There is after all. During the meeting, I got an update that something was accepted. So we can talk. So at this point, we're just gonna need a consensus. So we don't need, so we won't have to come back and open session. So we need a motion to go to closed session to discuss the purchase or sale of real property, followed by a adjournment with no action taken.
Any motion for? So move.
Second.
Rule call.
Chairman Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner McCarland?
Yes.
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Commissioner Salem?
Yes.